Yep. Check the lens cover, let's open the lens cover.
Alright, good evening everyone, sorry we're in a big room so it's kinda hard to uh maybe hard to hear us, I don't know if you guys can hear me well in the back. Welcome to the board supervisor meeting for Thursday, March 7th, please stand with the pledge of allegiance.
We do like the United States of America and we do republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the living, the just as for all.
Please remain standing.
Father, we thank you for this, this time together as citizens of this community, give us the strength to keep this community joint as neighbors, to work forward through this year of, of trial that we're coming upon and give us the strength and faith and to be the light in the community. We thank you in all heavenly father's name, amen.
Amen.
This meeting is being recorded for rebroadcasting purposes. There was no executive session held. Public comment, five minute period limit per comment on agenda items, please come forward to the front here to the left, if you have any uh public comment on the agenda.
Good evening, Ken, sorry. Have just two questions, both related to the new assistant township manager. First question is, what specifically, what are the duties of this person in that job? And secondly, what is this person's salary? How would you answer that?
Sure, it was discussed at a previous meeting, but for those of you who might not have been there or heard, the primary responsibility in the assistant township manager is to back up two positions, myself and that of the finance director. So in specific, the assistant township manager will be training on all things finance, she will begin working in zoning and subdivision shortly, she's also going to be preparing grants and a number of other projects. She is a graduate of James Madison University for a bachelor's degree in public administration. She graduated with a master's in public administration from James Madison University about three and a half years ago, and since that time she's been working in two municipalities in Delaware.
Okay, and the other question was what were their salaries?
Seventy-two-five.
Anyone else?
Don Miller, on the agenda tonight there's an item for deputy tax collector appointment, maybe might be covered later on. In March 5th of this year, in the newspaper Larry wrote that, and I'll just read it, or a revolve letter, he was shared with likes of newspaper reporter, Ford claims she probably filed the bonding information when she became tax collector in '22, the documents bonding her and her deputy were filed with former supervisor OC and former township Mike Hesching. In fact, Carrasco later confirmed there have not been any changes to the deputy tax collector position since the township proceeded in 2022. So you may be covering that later on, but there's an article that says she is, but here it says she didn't appoint him. How would you answer that, would you cover that for a second?
Anyone else?
She wasn't appointed.
Seeing none, we'll move on to our discussion and presentations, we have the consultants for Denver Road Partners LLC, welcome.
I have a few extra samples somewhere here in case anyone wants to see them. So I'm joined this evening by Andy Miller, who's here on behalf of the Battle Murder, which is dead member of partners and uh working with Catalyst Commercial Development, Andy represents, and Catherine Willsflop, who is an engineer and is the civil land planner for the project with Livic Civil Engineering. So we're here to talk to you this evening about a potential rezoning and some tax amendments to your zoning ordinance, and what I'd like to do is just give you an overview of the property that we're here to discuss, and then talk you through the evolution of the plan that we're proposing. So just to start out, if you turn to tab wanting the packet, you'll see a zoning map excerpt for the project that shows the property in its entirety. It's three tracts of land that are south of the turnpike and north of Denver Road. You have a 2.6 acre tract, that's on the western side of the plant, that's currently zoned with Millwoodland Park. Then you have two larger tracts, both of which are about 19 acres, under a R2 residential. This property is entirely within the urban growth area, it's also within an area that has been designated for industrial development on the township's comprehensive plan. What we're proposing to do is redevelop the property with a combination of industrial and residential uses, and that would require a partial rezoning of this property as well as a tax amendment. So we started this project by having some internal meetings with township staff, just to talk about ideas for the project, have a pre-application session and submission. What's marked as exhibit two and what was included in your packets for this evening is the initial development plan for the property. We've made some changes to this plan, I'll walk through those with you based on feedback we received, but first I want to show you where we started. So what we started with, and again this plan's dated January 10th of this year, was 192 apartment units, those are on the eastern side of the site, adjacent to the existing Millwoodland Park. They were divided into eight three-story buildings with 24 units per building. We were then proposing a 177,000 square foot warehouse, you can see that's more towards the western side of the site, and we were also proposing a trailer parking lot area that was intended to be a separately subdivided lot. Floodplain restoration was also a component of the project. So we submitted this to staff for informal feedback, and the feedback that we received was first that the trailer parking use was not something that was desirable to the township, that would have required a tax amendment, it's not currently permitted in your zoning ordinance, so that was the first piece of feedback we received. The other feedback we received was a question about whether we could maximize additional debt on the site, there's a well documented need for real force housing in this community, and I think there was a desire to see if we could help address some of that need on this property. So if you turn to what's been marked as exhibit three, you'll see the revised plan that we are now hoping to move forward with. You'll notice most prominently that this is a two lot plan instead of a three lot plan, so we've eliminated the trailer parking lot, that instead would be part of the industrial lot that would be improved with the warehouse, same size as was shown on the previous plan. The eastern side of the site where we have the apartments, we were able to provide some increased density on that side of the property, we're now showing a total of 208 apartment units. There are five story buildings with 40 units each, up on the northern side of the site, closer to the turnpike and the industrial building. Then moving to the southeastern side of the site, adjacent to the existing Millwoodland Park, we have some smaller buildings, three story buildings with a total of 24 units. Floodplain restoration would still be a part of this project as well. In terms of the warehouse itself, there were also some questions about what that height looked like, concerns about visually, how it would appear in this context. We have as exhibit four in your packet included a sample building elevation, something that could be a way to approach this visually. What we tried to do with this elevation is incorporate some more natural color, so it might not stand out as much against the landscape as, as some others might. We're looking to feedback on this, this is an initial concept to sort of start the conversation, but we know there's a desire from the board to, to see warehousing done in a way that is more visually attractive and more appealing to this surrounding community, especially in this location, I think to move forward giving the proximity to the residential. So to walk you through the tax amendment itself, if you want to refer to page five, that plan will show you what we're proposing in terms of the rezoning. Basically, the western side of the property, the westernmost 19 acre tract, and then the existing area that's zoned with Millwoodland Park would be reasoned to I-1 industrial. And then the bounds of the property would remain R2. There's a slight adjustment to the lot line that would be proposed, and that would simply be to add the lap or additional buffering of the industrial tract separated from the residential property. There are a few tax amendments that would also be required in connection with this rezoning. The first few amendments all related to increasing density on the site. So we are proposing to increase density on sites within the R2 district that contain 15 acres or more. The thinking there is, you know, we understand there may be a concern about going higher density on smaller properties where it may have more impacts on the surrounding neighbors. When you have a large tract of land, we think that's probably a more appropriate place to do denser development, it's gonna have less impacts and gonna be able to do more with the site to balance those impacts on the property. So the tax amendments, what I'm gonna talk about here is they relate to density, they all pertain only to tracts that contain 15 acres or more. Currently in the R2 zoning district, which is the township's high densities zoning district, you can only get a maximum of five dwelling units per acre. There are some other districts where you can achieve a little bit higher density in the township, but this is really falling short of what places 2020 would be having a target, which would be a minimum of 7.5 units per acre within the urban growth area. So what we're Did I actually say 2020? 2040. So what we're proposing here would be to increase the density to 12 units per acre on lots containing 15 acres or more in the R2. So pretty limited application would allow us to go a lot higher density on the site. We're also proposing to decrease parking requirements, again, on lots containing 15 acres or more in the R2 district. Currently, your ordinance requires two spaces per multifamily dwelling unit, we're proposing one and a half. That's consistent with what the ITE would recommend in terms of parking for multifamily buildings of this character. And then finally, with regard to building height, we're proposing to increase the building height to 65 feet, and that would allow us to do the five story buildings on the property. There are a few changes that we would also be proposing to the industrial criteria to allow the development of this site. Section 222023, each four of your ordinance requires a 50 foot setback completely devoted to landscaping between any I-1 lot that would be doing a residential use, and that applies to buildings, structures, storage, parking, loading, et cetera. So we would be proposing to remove structures from that list of things to which the setback requirement would apply, that would allow us to have access driveways within that 50 foot setback, and also proposing that the landscaping required by that section could be moved elsewhere on the property in circumstances where site conditions would preclude from being constructed in that buffer. If you look at our sketch plan dated March 6th, you will see that we are proposing landscaping in that buffer where we can accommodate it, but in the case of this project in particular, we're doing a floodplain restoration, or we hope to be doing a floodplain restoration, that would be, need to be evaluated, but that would preclude us from being able to install landscaping along the entire property line. So we're just looking to add some language to the ordinance that would recognize that site conditions may include a developer from being able to install that 50 foot landscape buffer. We're also proposing a change to section 222023-J. That section prohibits off street loading from being located on any side of a building adjoining land within a residential zone or facing an adjoining street. You can see this property has sort of Denver Road wraps around it, so it's got street frontage on two sides, it's got the turnpike to the rear, if the rezoning is approved, it will also have the residential property to the east, so it functionally would preclude us from being able to load on any side of the building. So what we're proposing for this amendment is if a property had frontage on two or streets, that loading would be permitted within the front yard, but it would have to remain outside of the front yard setback. So setback from the road, but could be within, you know, between the building and the street, which is how your ordinance defines the front yard. And then finally, section 22023-N requires a visual screen along lands that are adjacent, and again, this is in the industrial district to a residential zoning district, really it's very similar language to the first section we discussed about that buffer strip. This section does not talk about what exactly is supposed to be within that screen, but again, we would just be looking to add language that would recognize that there may be circumstances where that's not possible based on the site conditions, and that where that occurs, that landscaping or planning could be placed elsewhere on the property. So I'll pause there for a minute, I am gonna have Kat walk you through the plan in a little bit more detail, but before I do that, are there any questions about the part that I just covered? And then you'll fire away.
She might be answering a few moments.
Go ahead, Kat.
So if you went back to the March, March 6th plan we provided, this was referenced, so generally existing conditions of the building are slightly photography, turnpike and area that sit up a little bit higher than our existing property, and then additionally, if you notice, you know, we are, there is an extreme going through the site, that we are hard having floodplain restoration in too, so you should Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I do have a light, I do have soft voice, I hear it honestly. But no, so the, the storm water management in general is still being made throughout the property, all those drains, the existing drainage fees are going through the property. Additionally, there are some existing mobile homes are currently on the site, as well as residents, like residents in the farm. The warehouse will be on the western side of the property, near existing industrial uses, and as Claudia mentioned, consists of 177,900 square foot building, the residence will be on the western side, near the existing mobile home park, consisting of four to five, or five, four, five to five buildings on the north side of the floodplain, and two three story buildings along Denver Road. As I mentioned, the drainage is really set up so that the warehouse sits into the grade, and really grades to, to the front, to the existing floodplain restoration. We do feel that the warehouse is nicely bounded by the, by the turnpipes being worked by the floodplain restoration, and some additional potential options for mounding and buffering along Denver Road, as you can see a little bit more to Denver Road, there did, um, private communities. Additionally, utilities will be served by public water and sewer, parking and loading, warehouses as shown on here will provide employee parking to the north, loading, front loading base to the south, you can see the residence will park in, as Claudia described, the home plant, fire spaces are a unit, and it's provided in use to the residential units. The traffic and circulation, the residential will come, come off Denver Road, across the floodplain and into the five story buildings to the north of the stream. We do, conceptually, are looking to provide emergency access between the apartment buildings and the warehouse for fire emergency use. Conceptually, we're graded in here, and you can see a little break in the, in the trees in order to provide that. And we are providing for the warehouse building to be accessed, and again, from Denver Road, we have now applying a secondary access a little bit further in north on Denver Road, again, for emergency access. Landscaping and buffering, as I mentioned, we did particularly intend to buffer the warehouse, warehouse use from the residential use, and then additionally, provided additional buffer from Denver Road and the residential and industrial use itself. Any questions about that?
I don't see, I don't see any buffering on the current plan, where you guys are showing the three story buildings, the two up top here with the mobile home park. Were you guys thinking about putting any buffering right there from the apartment buildings to the mobile home?
So one issue in that area, we can look at some buffering options, you can see on the, and there's many utilities there, and that does try to, you know, issues with some larger things that could go there. Certainly, I think there are some low level things that could go there, it's just with a concern that actively there's water, a lot of that.
That was gonna be my next question, Claudia had mentioned about doing like a pre-planning with some of the staff at the township, or is that what you said, Claudia?
Yeah.
Was the water authority involved at all by chance, because I know they have, did they have any concerns about, they have, they have one of their wells there, I think, we're currently experiencing some, well, they're experiencing some issues right over here with one of the developments and sinkholes and stuff like that, and I don't know if, you know, what, what they commented over there, since we're actually getting so close. I see there's a line there, and I'm assuming that's a setback from, from like their wellhead?
Yeah, I actually think that their wellhead is not on our property, correct? It's, you know, that's actually our property line there in red. It is colored in like the rest of it, so it makes it a little bit weird, but I don't recall them raising any, Tommy can disagree, I don't recall them raising any of those concerns. Yeah, so it would certainly, it's just happened.
Okay, I see it, I'm here.
Yeah, I apologize, the coloring does go, does improve it. Also, I mean, just in general, without getting into a lot of the details of floodplain restoration, it does significantly increase connectivity between the, if applicable, between the actual stream and groundwater, so typically it is, it is something that, you know, increases flow capacity, or could potentially increase groundwater, actually because of the interaction between the stream and groundwater more effectively.
Okay. Still question time for us?
Yeah, of course.
So when I saw this plan come to us, I think it was two weeks ago when Tommy sent, sent it out, I looked over it, obviously, there might be buildings, reached out to one of our fire chiefs from Greemstown, because we have a ladder truck there and stuff, and that's where I told Tommy, hey, maybe they can look at going up a little more, get more density. I like that, I, I see that it eliminated some of the buildings, because I, we had, what, eight buildings total before, so now we're down to six. And the, where they felt comfortable with the reach with the ladder truck would have been the five, five, five stories, and I wanted to share that with you guys, and they said up to like a 70 foot reach, and I think you guys are trying to change it to 65. I guess the ladder truck's a 100 foot ladder, but their setbacks and all that, they're comfortable reaching at 70, at 70 feet. So that, that's obviously a positive if we're trying to talk density, higher density. My question would be, could, could the two front buildings as well be five, you know, be five stories? The calculations I had done, I'm sure you guys have this as well, it's right here. And, and I was thinking if, if, obviously I don't think we're gonna reach, be able to have all these buildings because of parking, I saw that you guys were going from two to one and a half, so that helped a little bit. Eight apartment buildings to the five floors, that was like 40 apartments per building, you'd be looking at 320 apartments, so we're looking at like 128 more than just, I guess, what is it, like 20 some more like this?
Yeah, we're at 208 right now.
208 from 192, so that'd be, I don't have my calculator, but okay.
A good increase, yeah.
A little bit of an increase.
Yeah.
How, you know, you nailed the nail on the head, if part of the whole place is 2040, everyone's talking about high density housing, and, you know, I've made this proposal even with Henderson presenting their other plan there for their, for their track, we don't have that, we don't offer that in East Calico. And, and obviously, you know, it'll lead to another question, can't the warehouses go away and, and make that whole track, high density apartments? I mean, we, we really, we really need it, we're right at, we're at a great location with, with a 222 turnpike, and a lot of people want to be here, but we don't have, we're not offering that.
So I'll, I'll let Andy take that one, I think, and, and I guess I'll start out by saying, I think Andy can probably speak to this better on behalf of ownership, but making the numbers work to be profitable on this kind of housing is really, really challenging, so I, what's happening here is your industrial use is really supplemented to making it work from a numbers perspective.
I figured that's what the answer would have been, but I wanted to throw it out there, so.
My question, real quick, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, I was gonna ask you what, if we're putting 40 units in there, what is the average square footage of each unit?
So, alright, let me, let me take a step back, I'm Andy Miller with Catalyst Commercial Development, we're the subsidiary of the applicant Denver Road Associates, this project. So to answer the first question about the apartments in the front, and if we were to make them instead of three story, five story, our concern was the parking. Just simply having enough room out there without adding parking to the left of the access driveway, you know, that makes it cumbersome for residents going back and forth, and we have our driveway located there on Denver River, and at kind of the best spot around that stretch of vertical curve from site distance, and point to kind of the safety line. So that was one reason, we also wanted to be a bit respectful of the height of the buildings, and that works for the roadway and the other residences. So the five story buildings kind of being setback over the floodplain and talking further back into the study, you know, to us just a little less intrusive than having five stories right there along the road.
So without having trees there, not being able to put trees there, even two stories is gonna kind of be overwhelming to those people, in my opinion?
Yeah, we can see what we can do to soften that up, and, you know, maybe we put the building in the parking, so it's not as close, the building isn't as close to the, to the property line, I mean, legitimately, as far as you see it, as far as we have this engineered right now, the piece has been, can definitely be moved around. So don't forget all the questions. So to the point about the labor force, Claudia's exactly correct, the industrial facility, there is a need for that, so our company just needs to build and list up the 117,000 square foot building on the other side of Mater Change, right across the street from McKinley. It's just, tenant just moved in a few weeks ago, a nice new shiny building, we're super excited about it, to be in the township, it is a great purchase for our, our company, it's now leased up, you know, you can't get any closer to the turnpike than that, than that facility, since we bought turnpike land. So there's definitely be a feminine need for this size facility in the township and in the area, so I should give them a look out. In addition to that, to, to make this type of affordable housing work, and workforce housing, you know, with even a lack of, let's say, high end amenities that some apartment complexes are now pushing very heavily, we need some offset there, so we need that industrial project to help offset, to be able to make them, you know, I don't want to say cheaper, that's not the right word, but, you know, more affordable for workforce.
To make your pension, to make your project pension.
Yeah, and that's exactly what it is, in full transparency. So if, if these type of apartments were huge money makers, horse, we'd cover the whole project with them, but that's not really what we're seeing in the demand. The other thing is, as you build apartment buildings that are higher and have more units in them, you, you typically can't build as many buildings at a time, you know, so you may build one building, wait for it to get half leased before you start the next building, it's a cash flow thing, really. To the, the size of units and the square footage in them, so typically these buildings would be a mixture of one, two, and three bedroom garden style apartments, you know. To the square footage, I don't know that yet, we don't, we haven't really honed in on that. This is a typical apartment footprint that is, that the industry uses, but every user that kind of takes these, you know, fits out the, the unit style a little bit quicker than half of them. So they may, they may start with one, then some more two and ones, and then they may get even more three bedrooms later. get even more three-bedrooms later. It just all depends on what that user would want. And as we would get further along in the process, we would get that user engaged with us, we would then, you know, start working through at that land development time, really, this is our breakdown of apartment, of units and the size of those units, you know, which helps factor into the parking discussion as well. You know, we know that, that a three-bedroom unit may very well have two meter leases, you know, but let's be honest, a one-bedroom is certainly, is another one. That's where that one and a half of parking space is really the sweet spot. I mean, we have some, some parking studies, obviously the IT backs that up, all there, you know, thousands of, of studies and data. So that's really the reason that we're looking at it. We also are excited about the floodplain restoration because, you know, that is something that is, is greatly beneficial to our project where by removal of that legacy sediment, we're able to use that for infiltration and for stormwater management. So it helps reduce our on-site costs from the stormwater management aspect, even though we're going with floodplain restoration. But that has a lot of ecological benefits, also has benefits to the township and the MS Corps. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of benefits to that. No one should think that that is a cheap way out or an easy way to go for floodplain restoration, typically cost as much if not a couple dollars more of the traditional stormwater basins on-site. But it, given the site and given the way the floodplain is and the stream, it makes sense. But not every stream is a good candidate or not every floodplain can, can get the benefits out of it. What we want with consultants to study that so far, that are pretty sure we can get some good back to the market.
Is my question about square foot per, per unit was to see what type of rental, they're all gonna be rentals obviously?
They would be, yes.
So just to see what kind of rental income and why type?
And, and that's something that we would, we would hone in tighter, we already have a market study and we would hone that in tighter with the end user. As to what their, you know, their, their market study and our market study combined would, would set the, what makes sense for the leasehold rate per square footage, per bedroom or how it would be sold. But I don't have that information right now.
But I think we are comfortable saying that this is, we're trying to target this towards a workforce housing demographic and in the tangible housing price point. So, you know, and, and lack of amenities and other features like that are some of the things that will help with that.
You guys try to be, are you guys, are you guys gonna be developing this to keep it or sell it or?
Sure, so we, right, we have several projects across Lancaster County already. Like I said, we want to cross the street, we're holding that one, that'll be a long-term asset for our company. What we've been doing in this instance is, and partially for the reason of the subdivision, is we would hold on to the industrial building, that would be a long-term asset of ours. We would sell off the apartment land to a apartment user or, you know, someone that is, we don't run apartments, we just do permits and approvals and get the right person in to, to build them and operate them down the road. So we would vet out that person and get that person on board. We may help with site construction, we may help with, you know, all kinds of utility work for floodplain restoration, but actually going vertical and operating it, that's not something.
Okay. Talked about floodplain restoration, does that go from one end of the property all the way to the other?
Typically, yes. It would go, our, our property would go at the culvert that goes under Denver Road and then that would continue the whole stretch up to where it either covers the property line or sometimes there's a cone-shaped area that sometimes you need to get adhesion on or join the property, just to make the grading work and to make the, the plant things work. So sometimes that does stretch on, it all depends on, on the depth and the amount of sediment and all the engineering stuff that goes into that, where you actually end it. We rely on our lineups to tell us that.
And the intent of floodplain restoration is to increase the surface area of the floodplain itself, the floodway, and so to any point, sometimes the grading can go off, off the site or maybe just stop a little bit before the end of the site, just based on grading in that area.
Your drawing there shows that the current stream, I guess, deviates out of the restoration area. Does that mean the stream gets redirected in, in that location or what's that?
So typically with floodplain restoration, what they, what they do is they look at the entire reach or the entire section of the stream and what they do is, no matter which way the stream may go today, they rebuild it. So it's rebuilt into a very.
Like braided?
Yeah, like a braided way that helps to keep the velocity of the water down and then along with all the plantings that they add within that floodplain, within the restoration part of it, helps to increase infiltration and groundwater recharge and so forth. So when you look at our stream now, the final product would, would look like almost like, you know, serpentine through the whole thing. That's, that's typically how they're done. And the ones that have been done in other sections, we were part of one, and previous employer, I was part of two, and it, it's just been very beneficial. What the, the ultimate results out of, you know, between Conservation District and DEP and Developers Line, it just turned out to be great out there.
They also do a great job of, as opposed to having a potentially underground facility that you don't see, you know, it's providing for modern management, it's relatively physical, so it turns to like long-term maintenance and care, it's right there in front of you. They have like less long-term maintenance and care because there's less actual physical structures in it, you know, you're not talking about mirrors or baffles or anything like that. And to me, this point, physically, you know, when you go a lot of times like this would be your example, you can stand and see where the floodplain restoration is and isn't, you can tell the, you know, how visually the increased habitat in the floodplain that exists during, in the floodplain restoration area.
So in this kind of design then, there, there is no holding facility, it's all done in the restoration?
That would be our intent. We would go in and study how much legacy sediment can be removed, they do infiltration testing in the floodplain area, and then we would hope that all of our management can be done within that. So you're correct, there's no underground systems, there's no surface basins, it's all here within the floodplain itself. And DEP and the Army Corps have a very stringent set of regulations to basically let you use that as your stormwater management. It's, it's not just a checkbox and you walk away, it's reading that.
I think, yeah, just to, to enhance what Andy said, additionally, there is testing that's necessary to see what, like what the hydrocapacity is of that area. So if it does turn out that it doesn't quite have enough capacity, it may cause other small stormwater in facilities, but Andy's pointing us because of the strange nature of the regulations on floodplain restoration.
There's another area that's almost square, it's a blue color there. What is that function of that?
That's an existing pond on the, on the property. We don't intend to do anything with that at the time. At this time, a part of the project, basically, we go.
Are you swimming here? Nice. When it comes to the location of the warehouse there, it shows all the loading docks facing Denver Road. Is it, is it a possibility to put that around the, the truck traffic that we face in the turnpike and up along the road?
So the reality is from the car parking, the existing grade from the car parking on the north side to where we have our entrance drive coming in on the south side, is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 16, 17 feet elevation change. So we're even anticipating that the car parking is gonna be set up higher than the finish floor of the building. Might be a retaining wall in there or another slope in there, cause we're trying to tier down as we come across that grade. When you drive by the site, you'll look at it, it doesn't seem that immense of a grade change until you start looking in flat pads. So from a grading and an earthwork standpoint, it would be extremely expensive to build retaining walls to cut into on the north and then fill up against walls on the south side to try to finish that little miller. So that's why we have that, you know, the loading dock is generally a four-foot elevation change, but on a site like this, everything helps. That was our reasoning for that. Again, that truck, that truck loading area is not up, directly up against Denver Road, you know, if, if we were in that scenario, I think we would look at something different. So again, I think that distance helps, you know, helps the utilization.
How much higher than that, than your basin there you have? How much higher is that loading, 70-foot elevation change, how much higher?
Yeah, so I think we're from, and this is one off memory, when you come in on Denver Road with our driveway from the industrial, so you get up to the dock area, I think we climb somewhere around 25 or 30 feet up that driveway to get up into the, the truck dock area.
I was trying to picture that in my head and I think what Jeff was probably getting at too, is that hill is above a valley that goes down across the neighbors or across the street. And noise from the top of that valley, from the top of that hill across that valley would probably maybe an issue with, for the residents that live down across there. What's that?
The apartments for the.
Yeah, so across that valley would be some, some noise concerns. That's what I was thinking, the same thing, if it's possible to put it on the backside.
There's big shoots right there across the street. And then over here, Pepperidge Farm has a couple, and all their docks are facing that right now. They all are.
High.
High's up here. This is, this is Kalis and Sylvan. Kalis is right here, Sylvan's up here, High's up here.
High.
This is, this is High, right? Yeah, that's the truck. A lot of these current ones, their docks are facing Denver Road, a lot, the majority of them. Roachlings are on the backside, I think, are on the backside, so.
We have a 50% shown there right now, the reality is to get a user in there and add his, his stair sections and a few other things in there. Probably use, probably a couple driving doors.
Do you, question, cause I, I know you guys, you're building there on Woody Creek, that was empty for quite, quite some time.
Unfortunately, it was, yeah.
So obviously I, I keep hearing from residents, you know, these warehouses go up, do they have, do they have a tenant deal or do they already have an end user or are they building and doing the sign of the cross 150 times a day that someone's gonna come in and rent it or, you know, how do you guys, how, what's, how do you guys approach it with your business?
So what we find in our industry, we, we're dealing with this one, with warehouse we're building down in Rehms right now, outside Etown, that's about 380,000 square feet. And when, most of the tenant RFPs, when they send you their list, the first thing they wanna know is what tax incentives you can provide them. The second thing they wanna know is how many months free rent they can get. And the third question they always ask is, how quick can we get in? So if you have a building that's not sitting shiny, ready to go, you're off the list and they're off to the next person. So what that building sat, while it, while it seemed to be vacant for a long time, these leases with some of these national companies, the company that's in that is a very large company, it's up eight months to negotiate that lease and it wasn't even that complicated a lot of, of these, you know, the lease of building. The speed that the industry moves is not as fast as you would think, but if you are gonna lease a building up and you don't have a user for starting construction, you need to have the building finished and ready to go. So that one was, it actually was leased a lot earlier than what it looked like till they started doing it. The other thing you have to realize is that people see these warehouses and they say, well, they're sitting empty, there's no one there. They may have a lease and someone doesn't really need to occupy it for eight or nine months, but they need, if they don't get on the, if they don't get the building leased and they don't get the space, they're out in the next ten, ten. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of these companies that are going out leasing up buildings, they may not need them for a couple months, but they can't wait, you know, they need to get their lease signed, it takes a while to get through all these, we need the attorneys, you know, tear, attorneys tear these things apart. It's, it's, our job's easy compared to working through all these for these companies. So it, it does make, you know, we always need to be out ahead and we, we have some projects too where we have warehouses everywhere in the high valley area, for example, we have multiple ready permit areas approved, all we need to do is post hours for it, we're the LE plan, but there, we wanna get a user who doesn't decide, so the end market is over there. So every market's different, every site's different, building size, you know, fluctually, and it's, I don't have a great answer, but that's, that's what I'm got.
I just figured I'd ask, just, a lot of people ask and they don't come to meetings and ask the question, so I might as well ask them.
Yep.
And I can report back when they answer.
Yep, yeah, no, it's a, I'll tell you what, if, if we have a silver ball and, and are, you know, blow, we're predicting that day to build it, we're trying to do that, but the best thing to have a building there ready to go.
Are you, did you say who's leasing the LE number?
Someone very local, someone who has a lot of real estate in the township already.
Maybe a cross-over.
They could be connected with someone nearby, I guess.
Do you, since you said that the apartment buildings are, are, would be built by probably somebody else or, do you see that as something that would start reasonably soon as, as approvals were there or would it, would it be sitting for years waiting for somebody to come along?
So the, the tough thing with apartment buyers and builders and operators is that they don't wanna be, they're kinda like single-family builders, they don't wanna come into the apartment and be there too early and they don't wanna be really part of any of the upfront work that we're going here. So we won't even go out to market to them until we, and we have a very neat list of folks that would be very interested in the site until we get our zoning approval, until we can go to them and say, this has now become a real project, we still have to go through land development and all these other items, but we have zoning approval, this is gonna become real, then they start to get interested. Some, some apartment folks, they may say, we don't think it's real until you have a user in your industrial facility, you know, and we know that there's employees there being our apartment. So everyone operates a little bit differently, but typically they would, I can say almost certainly, the apartments would not start to get built or constructed until the building is at least well under construction.
Until the warehouse.
Until the warehouse is well under construction, that's correct. Unless we get an apartment person that says, man, this is a hot market, I wanna be there, I'll lay the dollars out upfront, I'll start building right away, and you never know that could happen. We have people popping out of the woodwork for a new apartment project we've never heard of, we've seen before and they find, get approvals and I don't know how they find this stuff out, but you find those approvals and you get 309 units sent in a day one.
We might go back to my first question then. Let's look at down where the five-story buildings are at. Would you guys be able to get another building in there, squeeze another building, some parking in there or?
Right now, when we looked at that and we did look at that as a group, what we're hung up with a little bit is the available parking for another building. That's our concern. Kinda dropping it down to let's say, we even did the scenario where we went with space per unit, there are 1.25 spaces per unit, the problem is we don't have a lot of available area to build, let's say a reserve parking area, should more parking be needed down the road. And we design and permit it, but even if we don't construct it, it'll be very humid. We don't really have a lot of room in that area out there to do that.
So by looking at the old plan and looking at the new one, like towards let's say the triangle part up here on the new plan, right? And looking at the old plan, the buildings are shifted up a little further, cause you have four there. You know, maybe we'd be able to squeeze out a, a three-story in, in there and still be able to get some parking, like towards the triangle, you know, you guys would have to, you guys would have to do your numbers, see if it works or, you know, even, even a two-story, I, I think something will be better than nothing at this point if, you know, you wanna maximize the coverage that, you know, that you can get.
Yeah, we definitely.
It'll be, it'll be one of a kind in the, in the townships, cause we don't have another high-density like this, you know, going up. I'm not too keen on warehouses, I've said it many times, but there's, there's locations that it makes sense, there's locations that doesn't. 272 doesn't make sense, you got something. Two Seventy Two doesn't make sense, you've got something smacking you right in the face. You know, where the other warehouses are at, it, you know, it could make sense. I'm not saying it does, but it could. I, I'm big on design, like, you, if you look, if you look at just the concrete walls, it kind of looks kind of lean, you know, it's another warehouse. I, you know, I'm not saying it has to be like that, but there, there's so many different designs out there of warehousing that people think thirteen times, say, is that a warehouse? You know, but just, just options, you know, if you, if this moves forward, just keep that in consideration maybe, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. And if you want to send us images of what you're thinking about, that, I think that would be helpful for us. Because when you get into the aesthetics, it does become sort of a preference thing, and so, yeah, I'd be happy to take a look at what you have.
Now, somebody who walked, somebody that drives by and says, wow, that's a beautiful building, I've never heard one person say that about a warehouse, you know? You're looking at the dollar signs.
And on the point, you know, this being an industrial area, we definitely think that the warehouse does fit in with the industrial nature of the area, you've got, you know, concrete, you've got all the other industries around there. But we also recognize the need for, you know, the, the workforce housing, we appreciate that, that's something we definitely do. And that other corner, the other area where we have the apartment shown, doesn't lend itself to add another building or something else over there. It's just, it's not big enough, it's bifurinated by the stream down the middle and the floodplain, and it just, you know, how we can get to it reasonably, and, so we felt that that was, that was jamming too much on, on the site by trying to put another industrial use there. But, you know, the township has a need and we can help achieve it and work for it.
Glad I don't see the truck parking, I'm not going to lie.
Amy, please.
All right, we'll open it up to the public, if anyone has any questions for, for the presenters. Yes, sir.
Exactly. This wellhouse is over here in Mary Court. I think you stated earlier, this kind of sheets downhill, the, the pottery of the land, how are you going to protect that wellhouse? Because I know you're not from around here, but this community has thirteen well sites. There are all holes in the ground, we have a lot to take water out of the river, the creek down here, because that is used down at the upper treatment plant where all the sewage goes. So if we were to lose one of those wellhouses because of contamination in the ground or whatever, that's all I'm looking for. I know you can't give me an answer, but you need to really think long and hard about that. I know Lorenzo asked you, or someone asked, did you work for Paul with the water and sewer cars? That's going to be a concern there. Like I said, we have thirteen wells in this whole township, and that's where our, all sorts of water comes.
Senator, we appreciate, appreciate the initial background history.
Yes, sir.
Senator McCray. Has any thought been put into some sort of sound barriers between the apartments and the turnpike? Turnpike runs 24/7. It's going to be a very noisy environment for residences. We haven't gotten that far yet, to be quite honest. Anyone else? Any other questions?
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, but I think my understanding of Tommy is that if the board considers making a motion, it's not going to be done at their next, their next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, Amy.
On the.
It would be a motion to.
Okay. Is that, is what we submitted, is it? I think I have to talk about this. This is, okay.
Moving forward to action items of past meeting minutes for approval, gentlemen. Have you guys got any plateaus or anything there?
I have nothing.
And make a motion to approve the February fifteenth meeting minutes as presented. Motion a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Leonard Dean on the agenda, deputy tax collector appointment.
Hello? The tax collector, Jill Corden, for the approval of the appointment, the approval of the appointment of the deputy tax collector, of Rachel Walker. Here's the, the form that needs to be signed by the township in a public meeting, and also for the requirement to get the bond filed with the collector court. There's a two-part form. The township is required to fill out the top portion, and that is a requirement for the clerk of court. And the bond is required to be filed by hardship. Which is my tweet. The bottom portion of that form is for the county, and the collector court will be signing off on that asset for this. Also, for the collector court, they request that the original bonds be filed with, add to the collector court. So that would also be at that time.
Tommy, did you hear that, Ford? About the original bond?
Uh, no.
I'm going by what was done initially when I first came into office in 2022. That the original, the original bond for the county, which included the county portion and the township portion, was the original bond. And my deputy tax, tax collector, Rachel Walker, is actually in, is in the meeting.
Can you, can you repeat the part about the bond originally being made, we're on file? I think that's. I apologize, I'm trying to put this stuff.
The initial bond, so typically the tax collector bond is filed for the full term of the tax collector, which is four years, which, that's how the bond was filed back in my town office. It was done by the county bond company, E H D. And it was filed with the clerk of courts, which included portions for the county and the township. And the premiums were split behind the scenes between the county and the township.
You were, you were told, you bonded at one point, I felt, right?
Yes, first, whatever reason, historically, quite back to the Joe Fisher days, the township also had a bond for the tax collector. Wasn't until the prior financial administrator brought it up, because I had no idea, because I, I would never see it, so I had no idea.